Okay, alright. Before we get to the bids, because we have several bids to open, I just want to clarify, we have to make a budget transfer and a budget amendment for the truck payment. We do not have the money handed to the correct account for the payment, so we have to move some money around to afford to pay for that last invoice which is in the abstracts. Final payment is $68,000. Originally, money was budgeted in the general fund, which really shouldn't have been in the budget in the general fund, so what we have to do is move the money around to take it back out of general and put it in highway, and then back from capital highway into the highway machinery fund. So this is going to sound like a lot of numbers and a lot of very hard stuff to follow for people in the audience, but this is basically just bookkeeping work to keep the paperwork straight. The capital equipment reserve is where we had money budgeted that is there for the truck. That needs to be taken basically out of there and put into the machinery fund is where the payment comes out of. So everything stays, should stay in the highway fund only. There's no reason to introduce it into the general fund. It just makes a nightmare for an auditor and a bookkeeping trail. So the first amendment is to move the money back, I'm just going to go through it. General fund to the transfer to highway fund, A 9901.1, $150,000, from transfer to highway capital reserve, A 9901.9, $150,000. And then highway fund to machinery capital expenditures, DA 5130.2, $150,000, from transfer from general fund, DA 505301, $150,000. What that is, is it washes out 300, 300. We can do these together or separately. We'll do them together. Well, you know what, they're separate numbers. We're everyone's side of the line. I have a motion to approve.
Which one you want to approve first? All right.
I do need the budget amendment number.
Okay, I move the 41.
41?
Resolution.
Okay.
41 is the first one?
Yeah.
All right, I'll move the approved budget amendment 41, 2012.
That's the one you just wrote, $150,000?
Yes.
I was about to ask you why it was in 150 when I said 230.
That's the second page.
No, that's the second page.
Okay. All right. Do you have a second on that?
Second?
All in favor?
Sorry, do a second.
I think opposed?
Care.
Okay. Budget amendment 42. In the general fund, to inter-fund transfer from highway capital reserve, A 05301, $230,000, from transfer to highway capital reserves, A 9901.9, $230,000. Highway fund to machinery capital expenditures, DA 5130.2, $215,000, from inter-fund transfer from highway capital reserve, DA 05301, $215,000. To machinery capital expenditures, DA 5130.2, $5,000, from highway capital, excuse me, transfer to highway capital reserves, DA 9901.9, $5,000. You can have a copy of this. And again, this is just a paper trail to get it coded under with the highway capital expenditure account for the truck. So.
So. I'm not repeating it.
Do you have a second on that?
Second.
All in favor?
Under.
Opposed? Care. Thank you. That takes care of that. I'll sign this one and send it around. This is the original. Okay, we talked about last month bidding out the church painting and the church repairs. We solicited bids from several people, mostly people that have been into town, have worked for the town, have done work in the previous, previous to the town. We have five bids for the painting on the church, and we have, I believe, four bids for the repair work in the church. We had two separate RFPs with help ahead put together for the repairs in the church and the painting as well. So we did put that up a bid, and I'm going to start with, I guess, the repair work. We did have several issues, minor issues with the repair work on the church. Now, if you want to just maybe real quick run them through. Some of it was de-masonry, which can actually be put off for the future since it's not going to be detrimental to the health of the structure. Basically, pointing up the foundation brick in the chimney. There were some issues with some rotten battens that were on the siding that needed to be replaced or repaired, and some siding boards, they have a unique cut on the bottom. Some of them were just removed, and before the painter, they could actually patch in another board to keep that same continuity of siding. Other than that, I forget, there was some rotten, loose window stops, the swindler sills were kind of kippy. That can be repaired with a two-part epoxy resin system, as opposed to pulling it all out. And it really wasn't a major undertaking, what I could see. There was a lot of missing lanyards repair work. The high work, I didn't look at. I didn't get a 32-foot ladder, so I assume that's okay. The steeple looked actually well, and most of it was just minor repair work. I mean, it's quite a bit of it, but there was just enough of it that we had to bid it out. So I'm going to start by opening, oh, you opened it.
That's fine.
I'm going to start by opening the bids. First bid, this is for the church repair. First bid, residential renovations. For exterior repair work on St. Church, residential, opposed to make repairs to the church, describe the proposal, supply materials and labor, total bid price, $2,850. We also asked that they give us an approximate start and completion date of the work on both of these, so we had an idea, September 4th through September 30th. If he wins the bid, he may have to work on that. John Stats and Sons Enterprises. He has one for painting, which goes in there, and one for repair work. Repair, refasten all the windows stops. Looks like he's just repeating the RFP. $1,400. Let's see, start, finish, September 12th, 4th through the 7th? I guess 4th through the 7th. I don't know, I'll have to check the dates again. $1,400, $7,000. Repair work, that's outside, fast windows. Total price, $2,780. Start date, August 15th, finish until 20th. Now, that's, that's better. And BT General Contracting. Okay, we'll have to verify all the information, but I think most of this is reporting. And I actually toured and showed every one of these contractors the building, what we're going to do, so they do have a good idea.
They did a walkthrough.
Yes, every one of them did a walkthrough with me as a contractor. Total price, $1,810.
Give me the date.
I didn't see a date on here. So we have, we have, you should read those back to me if you want to.
Sure, residential renovations, $2,850. John Stats and Sons Enterprises, $1,400. Jennings Contracting, $2,780. BT General Contracting, $1,008.
Okay. The only thing I can say, we need to verify the insurances on the bidders, but it's up for discussion. The lowest bid was $1,400 by John Stats and Sons. If you verify the information, the insurances, unless we have a reason to disqualify the bid, I consider it a worthy bid. I would certainly accuse myself because I am related to others through Stats, so we're not going to be able to meet for the vote, we have to board.
Question I have is, if he's not going to start until, I mean, September, we may want to wait until we see what the painting bids are, because we don't want a painting before the repairs or nothing.
Right, and the second lowest bidder was BT, Billy Cole, BT Contract.
Didn't give you a date.
He didn't give us a date at all, so certainly.
Third one was Jennings, which said 15th of August, which is a better date, but it's almost twice as much money.
Right, so there is some follow-up work that they want us to work to actually award this bid, I would think. But I would certainly like to get approval from the board to award to either the lowest bidder or the second lowest bidder providing start dates in line with the painting contract, so we can actually get this moving for another meeting. So, you know, that's up to you to consider, but I don't know, I might wait until September to award the bid. So, you know, I can certainly follow up with both the lowest bidders on this, the lowest bidders, and see, you know, about the start dates, when we can do it. And, you know, we may have to disqualify the first bid if he can't get there before September, and maybe BT can get there next week. I mean, this is actually priority, and again, we'll go through the painting contracts, but why don't we wait, open these, and then do it all once.
And then they also provide you with liability insurance as well.
Which is actually in the RFP that they, that'd be listed on your actual policy. So why don't we go through these, and then we'll take a look.
The other thing we could do also, I think, is if you're talking to me, please give some questions. You can have a quick special meeting.
If we have to, yes. We don't have to, we can. Now, let's do a lot of time. First one, Stats and Sons Enterprises for the painting of the church.
Who was that?
Stats, John Stats and Sons. Says September 7th to the 27th, so he planned on doing the painting.
What did the other, what did the?
The other one, we looked at it.
4 through 7.
It's the 4 through the 7 for this one. It's the way you do it, you put September 12th, and then he's got the dates, the 4th through the 7th.
So it's like follow-up.
Yeah, I think that's what it is.
Yes, this is the follow-up right after it. His price was $7,800. Second bid is from Fred Mergan Haller. Total price, $8,650. $8,847.
$8,000 what?
$8,47. And he did have a start date of August 20th. Date, total, $10,900. And Darryl Millius, which I might add is the one who painted the town hall, which was the lowest, was the possible bidder at the last one. Uh, oop, $11,500. So remember, if you don't mind, just read those back.
Okay, John Stats and Sons, $7,800. Fred Mergan, $8,650. Jennings Contracting, $8,847. BT General Contracting, $10,900. Darryl Millius, $11,500.
Okay, Stats, John Stats and Sons, again, lowest bidder, $800. It's about $800 lower than the second lowest bid.
Does time finish, is pretty big?
Well, let's talk about September, so that is okay for paying. Obviously, we can pay very, you know, I mean, sometime I'll tell, honestly, so that would be okay, but certainly want to do follow-up, check with him, we have to make sure the insurance is in line. Obviously, if his date, if he can stick to the date, we'll get it done in that timeframe. He's done work for us before on town.
What was he?
He worked on, did the gutters on the academy building two years, three years ago. I know he's done work for us, and he had insurance, obviously, a lot of insurance to get to as well, but again, it's up for discussion with the board. Again, I would accuse myself from that vote as well, since he's the lowest bidder. It's up to the board to consider how I'm going to proceed with this, but I don't want to wait till the end of the year.
The concern that I had was the late start date on the repairs, but it looks like that's not a problem because he's going to, you know, kind of do the, do the repairs and start the painting right away, since he's a little better on both, both items. So that, that seems to be the one thing.
I think you still have a question after the question.
Ray, once upon a time when we painted these buildings, I think it was the community house, some of these contractors included windows and doors, some did not include windows and doors. It really got swirling. What is painting the building?
Well, on the, on the RFP, it says all exterior painting, which it does include. I know I've had a specific conversation when I walked with them, the cross all the way up to the steeple is even included. So I think everything is included on this, and I'm pretty sure they're willing to order that, because I did talk to them about lift, and you lift all, and they asked me, do we need lift to get to that cross? I said, yes, you know, so they did.
They're going to include a lift in there?
Well, they're going to print that cross, I don't know how you get to it without it.
Okay. What about the honeybees? Did they were well aware of the?
I pointed that out to everybody, yeah, and I told them that, you know, a couple of them asked, well, are they going to be removed? I was like, well, that's been a big discussion, and we decided not to remove them, as far as, you know, the honeybees, and we're trying to work around that, so.
Well, maybe.
One of the reasons that we had to do all that window repair over here was in the end, the paint job did not include the windows, so none of that putty got painted.
Well, fortunately, well, unfortunately, plexiglass is over all, all windows. We're not removing that, they're going to paint and seal around them, so they're not, you know, that's a lot of the window trim. The sills, obviously, are all going to need to be actually poxy on most of them and painted, so.
But we all got caught on that building. We had no idea, when you paint a building, you don't paint the windows?
Yeah, that should be, exterior painting is exterior painting.
Hundred percent.
That was the game of the times.
Line five on the request for calls, it says, plexiglass remain unstained glass windows, caulk sealed, and painted around. So that's around the plexiglass.
So I think the RFP we put out is pretty, pretty detailed. I mean, it covers all the exterior painting except for the foundation, obviously, which we said we're going to have to do at some other point, so, but yeah, I mean, it's, it's up to the board.
Subject to your confirming their insurance and making sure that they understand that they're painting everything, again, I'm sure you told them that to begin with, it's in the RFP, but just, there's quite a difference in price.
That price is very, very reasonable, in my eyes. I mean, I'm surprised we had anything under $10,000 in my eyes, to tell you the truth, because it's quite a bit of work over there. So, I mean, actually, all three of the lowest bidders were, you know, I mean, they're all, they're all within the range, I would have thought, the price would came in at, I would put it that way. And $11,000 is not out of the ordinary for that size of building and what's involved, so every one of those are good bids, just one guy, it looks like he's going to do a lot cheaper than the other, that's all.
Yeah, I would move that we put in the worth of bids for the repair and the painting to John Stats.
Condition of time.
Insurance and just a.
Verification.
Discussion, verification of $50, but.
I'll do another walkthrough with him, like, to verify, I guess, and, you know, at this point, he's the lowest bidder, but, you know, as long as he confirms what he's going to do, then it's okay, and we get a lot more.
And he's worked first before, so he can have his representation, so. I second that motion.
Can we do a roll call vote, please, so we can resolve?
Okay, Cale, Councilman Cale, I'm sorry. Just I or?
I.
Councilman Desmond?
Aye.
Councilman Havel?
Aye.
Councilwoman Moore?
Aye.
Supervisor Stats?
I accuse myself. I'm both. Okay. All right, that's all we had for bids. Well, let's see, what's going on in the county. First thing, there's a lot, it's been a lot of discussion, a lot of articles about homeless shelter in Hudson. And if anybody else knows what's going on with it, I'd love to know, because I can tell you right now, I don't even know what's going on at this point. There's been so many emails going back and forth between supervisors, Hudson supervisors have split on this, and, you know, every time I read the article, something else has changed, so I really do not have an update, and I'll know better from my meeting Wednesday night, what's going on with this, but I just really, I can't add anything to what you've read or ready or heard, because it's all over the place. Like I said, the Hudson supervisors don't even agree, so there's been several issues with that. I'll certainly bring everybody up to speed next month, but, you know, probably read three or four articles on paper beforehand, but they'll let you know as well on, before that.
Do you know if there's any reason why it's handled by the county rather than Hudson itself?
Well, the county is actually the ones that are responsible for the DSS, the social services, and that's why, you know, we are, you know, a dignity. Yeah, it's part of the homeless and the DSS service, so, you know, it's just, there's a lot of things at play, and it's just, it's all over the place, and I don't want to update that. Can't give you any direction on where this is going yet. Courthouse, that project has been bid out, the bids have come in. Last month, we had a little glitch with the electrical bid, because there's four different bids, there's a mechanical, a general, engineering, I think I said that, an electrical bid. The fourth set of bids was the electrical bid, there was a problem with that, we had to disqualify or reject all the bids, which was only four. We redirected the bids and rebid it again. We just received the new bids back again. We're going to, at this meeting Wednesday night, award that total project as a go-ahead and approve it at the next meeting. It did come in approximately $8.6 million or $8. something million, it's about a million dollars less than what we anticipated, let's put it that way. I guess that's a, I guess that's a good thing, because, you know, it's still a lot of money that we have to come up with, or under consent order to do this, we don't really have an option by the court system, but it is under budget from what we budgeted and plan on spending, and we'll actually find out what the bids are in, they'll actually have those for the next meeting. So that project is a little bit long, and it should be awarded Friday night, so that should get under construction here this fall, so that's a, that's a good thing. About 20 years in the making. Pine Haven, had no update on that, that was supposed to be in front of the board for approval about the, let me have a. I'm sorry. Pine Haven, C-O-N, I have a memory loss. Slippery the knee. Haven't heard anything on that yet, I don't know, it's supposed to, it was supposed to go between, before the board. We should have something hopefully this month coming up to find out how we made out on that. I don't really see any problems with it, but hopefully it'll go through, because we certainly, you know, would like to get that project underway as well. I guess we should talk about the fire that we had recently. Again, that was, that was quite the test of our services. I don't know, how many companies were there, from how many different counties?
Eight companies initially called.
Eight companies, and what did they end up?
And then they brought in some later on the day with tankers, so.
I mean, they had a major, major fires. It was all over the news, obviously, I'm sure everybody's heard about this, from one point or another, but chemicals and air quality, which did test okay and safe, but, you know, it was just a massive, massive fire and basically disaster. I mean, it was a lot of work, a lot of volunteers, a lot of firework there, for days working on this, and I'll certainly, obviously, thank all the volunteers involved with that, but DOC Center was open for, I don't know, 48 hours on that thing, they were running non-stop. There was a lot of work, a lot of manpower went into handling this, and I think they did a fairly good job, despite what you already did, to read the papers. You know, I don't know what people expect to be notified by knocking on everybody's door, but, you know, I don't know how you really respond to a disaster like that any better than they did, and I think they did a fairly good job of handling it, so, you know, I'd just like to thank our emergency service in the county. Bill Black is head of the emergency service, and he does a great job, so, you know, something that that may have been due, they did a very good job.
That was a question I had, Ray. They mentioned in the papers, and people were saying other counties have reversed 911. Now, is that a practical use of 911 employees? Would that be an automated service, or would it require employees to be there making the calls when they should be dealing with other parts of the emergency?
I'm going to have that conversation with our technical.
I'm wondering how that goes.
I'm going to hear up there, because I think it's automated, and I'm pretty sure that the setup is automated, automated response.
And it is, what would it cost?
Exactly, and I'm sure they're looking at that right now, because of that, on comment that was done in other counties, that would be the only thing you could add to make it any better, really.
It seems to be the only practical solution, if it's effective and, you know, cost-effective.
I think what they could do is code in like a zip code or something, and just send it out, and everybody would get a message at that point, and I believe they are looking into that, but we'll certainly look at that next meeting.
Except for those of us with, down at Columbia County, zip code.
You'd be in trouble then.
I'd be in trouble, and half my herd.
Let's see, what else? Anything else going on, if anything substance? I don't think so at this point. Townwide, area annual barbecue this past Saturday. It was, it was a great, great, well, I can't say great time, it was a great time, it was a good turnout, it was a little less than last year, but if anybody stepped outside, they would realize that, I think, the heat probably kept quite a few away, you know, a couple elderly people in my family couldn't make it, because it was, it was literally 90-some degrees and humid. It's very, very tough on everybody to be outside, but, you know, we had a good turnout. I want to thank everybody that was involved with this, obviously, Village Green Committee, Tammy headed that up, did an excellent job, and enough volunteers, you know, it wasn't overwhelming, but there was enough volunteers. You know, Charlie, you know, specifically thank you for the garden tractor poles, you were there all day calling poles.
Read your words and say it.
That was a great turnout, we had a lot of people there for that, and everybody enjoys that, you know, there, Soffo was there, obviously, the whole day as well, I'm out. I want to thank the fire company, the Fire Company came down with a truck, and they actually did a demonstration, they had, I don't know, several members here for the fire company that took a car and gave a demonstration with the jaws of life to cut the doors off and cut the roof off, so they gave everybody a look at how that works, and they must have been extremely winded. They were hot and full, full fire here, and it was, you know, it couldn't have been any hotter when they did it, so it was, you know, I'd like to thank them as well, they did a nice job. Town and Germantown, thanks for the dunking tank, actually, it didn't get used this year, I didn't have to get in it, so I was, I was happy, but, you know, thanks for letting us borrow that. Keel Equipment donated the tractor for the pulls to pull the sled back and forth, so they, again, I want to mention them. And Royal Flush was the company that donated the portable toilets. A lot of this stuff, you know, is from donations, I mean, it really would not happen if it wasn't for the donations of the companies and people that helped out, and obviously the help, you know, there was a lot of people that showed up to help out. And I would like to just, I am going to mention, and it's too difficult to mention everybody that was involved, but I do want to mention the elected officials and the appointed officials that were at the, at the event, which helped out most of the day. Yeah, Chair Soffo, which was there, which is the head of our chair, planning board, he was there most of the entire day. Head of our zoning board, John Larson, was there most of the day. You had planning board member Brenda Case was there, waiting tables and working all day. You had Pete Chiketti was there the entire day, cooking in the back, which is probably the hottest job. We had one of our justices here, Banks was here, all day working. We had the entire town board was here. I know Nancy and I were here the entire day, Bob stopped in, Evan and Ed both stopped here, and I think you even had your kids helping out for a little while, shucking some corn there. So, I mean, we had an excellent representation of all of our boards.
And Mary, she was here.
Get to Mary, I'm getting her. Mary, our clerk was there, with her deputy clerk and her granddaughter, which were helping out, you know, we really did have a good show on, all the boards, all the elected officials, it was a good time. I mean, I'm really glad to see. It was a good time, I mean, I'm really glad to see everybody. Our court clerk as well was here, that's right.
Our historian was in the.
Historian was here, old man was here. So, I mean, we did have a good showing with everybody involved in the town, um, business. And again, I can't go through all the volunteers, but, you know, there was a ton of them, um, I shouldn't say ton, there was a lot of people that every single year helping out. And it's just nice to have at a community event like that.
And I don't think anybody appreciates how much work Tammy puts in on that all year round.
Tammy does an extremely enormous amount of work on this. And, uh, again, if it wasn't for the volunteer work and donations, it just wouldn't happen. I mean, there's not a lot of profit on this once it's all said and done. Um, I, you know, we look, I'll be curious to see the final numbers when it does come back, but I don't think you made much money. Yeah, you didn't make much money. But everybody, and I mean, everybody said to me, yeah, I'd love this and I'll help this continues, you know, so, I mean, it's really nice of that. So I just like, again, to thank everybody that was involved. And, you know, and I'm gonna finish up with, uh, the highway crew. Again, um, they weren't here, but, you know, if it wasn't for them, this function would not happen. And that's just, that's just the way it is. I mean, they spent the entire day Friday preparing for this, putting tables out, putting, uh, you know, the benches up, getting the bench seats up, uh, putting garbage out, setting up the grounds, putting the fence up, clearing up the whole area. Then they spend the whole day Monday when they come in cleaning up everything, putting everything away. And you just can't say enough, I mean, if it wasn't for them, they are our maintenance crew and it just, it would be very difficult if they weren't on board with this and help us out. So even though they weren't there, I certainly go above and beyond on their donation services as well, so.
Ray, I'd like to add to that, we, we needed some rakes and stuff like that and you weren't here yet. Dylan called Adam, which is family, and Adam came right down and got us what we needed at Highway Garage. You know, about ten o'clock Saturday morning, you know, here again, you know, it's on their own time, but, uh, he was right here.
I think I saw Patrick also, didn't I?
What?
Patrick, didn't I see Patrick?
Well, him and PJ were together when I came.
Oh, no, I know. So I, cause I heard the name Patrick, somebody was calling.
So, uh, you know, again, I just wanna say, you know, again, thanks to everybody involved, so, again, this is very nice. And the last thing I'd like to add is, uh, on the heels of that, uh, V F W comments and V F W, I certainly would like to, uh, prepare a letter for the town. Certainly thanking them for everything they've done and certainly appreciation of their services and their organization for the best, um, several years. And I'll address it from the town board, unless, you know, unless you'd like to do it some other, some other way. But I certainly think we should send a letter and thank them. So, uh, I will prepare that and then get it signed and get it out to them as well. That's a sad thing and I just, uh, it's not, uh, it's unfortunate. Okay, uh, that's all I have. Can you pay our tax?
Just before you do that, just look at these numbers again, and, and three of the contractors bid on both jobs. And if you add the two, two together, obviously John Stacks is still the lowest. And is about twenty-four hundred dollars less than the next lower bid, which, which would have been Jennings. It'd be cute as the highest of those three that bid on both. And I think it's advisable, since we have, that if, if for some reason John Stacks can't do it, that we look at, that we're getting Jennings to do, so that they can do both parts of the job. That way they can't blame, say, well, he didn't do his part, right, so that's why I did it.
Runs quicker and smoother that way, it's more control.
So.
Okay, I mean, if that's what the board would like to do, I mean, I'll certainly come back to you if there's a problem with the first bid. Um, if it is, we'd have to, um, certainly consider moving forward with that suggestion. If you'd like to make that more so now looking.
No, I don't, just, just wanna point that out.
If there is a problem, um, what we'll do is we'll call special meeting and we'll authorize to provide a second.
Okay, Trust and Agency, motion to pay, who was this, three through five, for twenty-eight thousand nine hundred seventy-seven dollars and sixty-four cents?
I'll second it since I'm not reading it.
All favor? Aye. Close? Carrie.
General abstract number eight, purchase number one three five through two hundred and ten, in the amount of one hundred and twenty-nine thousand, or two, twelve thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars.
Consider that was not that high.
No, seconded.
All favor?
Aye.
Close?
Evan's is a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the one I was thinking of that.
Motion to pay Highway abstract number eight, vote through this number sixty-five seven through eighty-three, in total of one hundred and forty-one thousand, two hundred and fifty point dollars and fifty-two cents.
Thank you.
Favor?
Aye.
Close?
Carrie.
Thank you. Okay, hold communications, comments to the board. I, I have some before we do that, but about the bridge, we gotta backtrack, everyone's been up here, most of the.
Yep, no, good.
I did a little look at that bridge, I had the opportunity to, uh, I, I talked to a Dutchess County Legislature, uh, uh, Dutchess there recently. And in the town of Dover, they had a similar bridge issue problem. And he put me in contact with a company in Alabama called Bailey Bridges. They make bridges for the army and civilian use, they've been in business for many years. I, uh, they're very reasonable, I called them up, uh, in Alabama earlier this week. And I went over to look at that bridge and I'm guessing it's a seventy-five foot span, maybe? He quoted a bridge, a one lane bridge, eighty thousand pound at about seventy-five thousand dollars delivered.
Like a prefab unit?
It's, it's one piece. They do make them modular for longer spans up to two hundred foot. Like I said, the army, it's their, their, the army car engine is their first choice to build the bridges, they've been around a long time. It will have a wooden deck on it, they can do a painting for local contractor with concrete on it. Or they could use a metal ready, uh, grate on it also. They have all kinds of options. The only thing is, you, the county would actually have to set this for the crane. And it's a seventy-five foot bridge, uh, of, um, uh, probably, uh, an eighty-five ton crane could set that quite easily, maybe an eighty ton crane. But, uh, it's a far cry from five hundred thousand, as long as the buttmans were good.
Yep.
If the buttmans were approved, and it's like, it's one.
The buttmans were redone here about twelve years ago when they dug the bridge.
I thought so.
I think.
It's an eighty thousand pound bridge he quoted. Now, it does, you can get these bridges in, uh, hot and galvanized also, but it'd be an upcharge, probably closer to a hundred thousand. This is a free part of.
Still.
Still, it's very inexpensive, so I will get you information to take to the county. Because if they wanna look at it, and Alan Serment is the county, the Dutchess County Legislature that did it for the town of Dover, he got lucky because he found one sitting somewhere in New York. A town had bought it and didn't use it, it was sitting and they, so they got their bridge for forty thousand dollars. So, uh, and it was, it was a lot smaller though. But I thought eighty thousand pound, wouldn't that support a fire truck, Charlie?
One thousand pound, and our biggest truck, well, we don't weigh twenty.
There you go.
They do be priced, they'll probably put a five ton on it like they did on Pleasant Valley, so forty tons sounds good.
Well, the biggest thing is the fire truck, I'll be honest with you, is much as school bus. But right now, I mean, these people got to cart their kids out to the other river. And, I mean, school bus don't weigh nearly that much.
And, and one, one question related to Bailey Bridges, now, did you talk to this, uh, permanent long-term bridge?
Yes.
Bailey Bridges were things that are put in for emergency, I remember nineteen fifty-seven when they had flooded Connecticut.
They do.
Bailey Bridges all over.
Right, right, they, well, if you're gonna, they, there's probably like a twenty-five year life expectancy unless you upgrade to the galvanized. And then that's gonna be a different issue. But at that point, I don't know, uh, I didn't have a detailed conversation with the salesman from Alabama. But probably at that point, maybe if it's twenty-five years, they would have to, uh, reassess it and do bridge repairs like all of our other bridges in the state. But it's something to look at, it's a far cry from, uh, half a million dollars.
Bailey Bridges, but, I mean, that's something you come in and put up and then you have it up in a couple of days.
Yeah, I'll put it this way, i- i- if, if, if the county could do the services of, of setting this thing and we had an expenditure of a hundred thousand dollars on all the rest of twenty-five years. We could afford to do another one in twenty-five years and it was a hundred and twenty-five thousand and still be under a half a million dollar, what they're talking.
Remember a few years ago when the, when that bridge fell down on the thruway? And they went through and took the farmer's land and they could put it over a railroad. Listen, I asked a question of Charlie Vanny at the time, he was the, uh, the resident engineer for the D O T, I said, why did they put a Bailey Bridge? And I remember the, the flood in Connecticut, he says, well, that's the thruway. The D O T had one of them and they could use it, they used it, the thruway didn't want to, they did some of that.
Yeah, it's a high-speed road too, you know, so.
They had some of those on, on the, uh, on the parkways?
I'd certainly like to get my hands on information also.
I'll get it for you.
See what they're saying, why we can't use it, but, you know, let's push it, you know, let's see.
Absolutely.
That's not a lot of money to, to the county to budget.
No, see, I mean, it was only twelve years ago, that was for about fourteen, how many years ago was that fixed?
Fourteen years ago, it isn't, it isn't fifteen years ago.
Something like that.
That's what all, the whole thing, that was a complete new bridge fifteen years ago and due to the lack of maintenance, it's in shape with it.
We still, we still gotta take the, the old one out.
You start to remove it, that, that's gonna be a problem.
Which if you have a crane there anyway.
Right, it should come out one piece.
With what scrap is worth it, you get it removed.
That's a, got a black concrete.
Black top.
Old metal on the side, it's, you know, it's.
I'll steal some scrapper, might want.
Could I just ask, going back to that too, the price to remove the bridge, just that, was a hundred and fifty?
Price to remove the bridge and to acquire the property and the whole size.
Really?
Yeah.
And not to put in the turnarounds?
That's their estimate.
That's what they're estimating because they're gonna do all that with the county forces.
Hundred and fifty?
Hundred and fifty thousand.
Or acquiring the property, putting in the turnarounds and?
And removing the bridge. So just the removal of the bridge.
Ray, they don't really know what they're gonna have to pay for the property.
Oh, that's.
I don't buy it.
Just the removal of the bridge might be very insignificant.
That's something that people want to tell the market.
That's the price they're asking.
Uh, that isn't always an option when things like that go on.
Again, that was an estimate, so, you never know. All right, um, okay, any other comments? Sarah, I'll tell it for you.
Well, uh, I'm gonna say, I, I have two items. One item is a Dave Raymond, and I'll pass it around, somebody wants to pass it around. Some historic paraphernalia that belongs here in the town. One is an original postcard of Fred Reifenberg's store, which if anybody knows where Fred Reifenberg's store is, it's the corner building down here, not the red building on One Quads Street. It's an original postcard from nineteen ten. The second thing is dated May fourth, nineteen forty-two, is when school district number three closed in Clamont. And it's the first busing contract for that school, the German Downs. The third happened to be just a couple envelopes, which Nancy should remember all of this, cause all but the postcard, these envelopes and the letter came from Nancy's husband and father. Dylan Roger Moore was given to me and I'm putting them in the town. The fourth thing is, it's two pictures of our first Christmas caroling, where we went to about thirty houses in the town by school bus and Christmas caroled a couple days before Christmas. And it's a couple pictures of it. And I really think this belongs in the archives of the town. I've had it for a long time, but things are getting to a point where I gotta get it where it belongs. My second item is the Village Green Barbecue. I agree with everything Raymond said, except a couple items. Number one, it's a shame. Yes, we had a lot of help from town board members from that, but we still didn't even have half of our elected or appointed officials even show up at our Village Green Community Day. We were down roughly fifty meals, Nancy.
Something like that.
Uh, Nancy was there, I mean, uh, but again, you can blame the heat, you can blame whatever. We can't continue to go down no close. I mean, probably down around a hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty. We were lucky this year, we had decided to cut back on the food we bought, but we still had way too much food left over. The big thing that bothers me, if you notice, I was, I was nominated the most valuable participant. I don't deserve it. I don't deserve it. The ones who deserve it especially is there's at least nine people that are key players in our Village Green Barbecue that don't live in the town of Clamont. They live in Sorgetes, Crayville, Red Book. Now, folks, is there something wrong with this picture? I'm, I'm happy to have those people, cause without them, we wouldn't have a Village Green Barbecue. I mean, the one family, you, the Tammy's having problems with her father with help and that. The one fella and girl, they ran every day last week, all day long, getting ready for this. And like I said, I didn't deserve this. These people deserve it that worked there. And again, this year, I guess I could say we were lucky, the crowd was down, you really didn't have a lot of help to serve, I'm told. I mean, this came from two or three people serving.
Because Mary's family.
Our serving group was way down, we were short, but again, there wasn't a big crowd in each setting, so, I mean, I heard nothing but great about the serving. I mean, people I talked to in the last two days, hey, I had the best service ever, well, there wasn't a big crowd. We would have had a big crowd, it would have been a little different, folks. So let's think about it another year, let's try to participate, let's come and help, let's come and eat. I had the largest, I, our largest garden tract of pole in the area over the past few years has been a hundred and thirty hooks. I had a hundred and eighteen hooks out here in that heat the other day. You can tell how those people enjoy what they do. I had the largest display of antique and classic equipment out here than what we've ever had. I had twenty-one palm tractors, we had the bathtub, we had the wood splitter, we had the bench saw, we had some pedal cars, we had one antique car. You know, it was probably one of the, one of the best, it's the biggest display I've ever seen out here. Why? Because I asked people to come and they supported me. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Charlie. No, we certainly appreciate everything that was done. Uh, again, I said it all, but, uh, you know, so I'll add to it and, uh, you know, hopefully actually we have a bigger crowd and more help. Okay, any other comments? Anything else you'd do? All favor? Close? Carrie, thank you.